Good evening and welcome to the Brookfield Selectments Meeting of Tuesday, March 20th, 2018. If anyone here would like to join me in joining. I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
It's okay, Linda, it's been a long day.
I know it has been a long day today. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the following warrants. It's a debit warrant for 3718 for $53.60, an expense warrant for 3818 for $24,905.70, a payroll warrant for 31418 for $153,386.62, another payroll warrant for 31518 for $1,365.91, another payroll for 31518 for $1,954.77, a proven expense warrant for 31918 for $44,495.61, and a wire warrant for 31918 for $13.15, an expense warrant for 32018 for $3,783.73.
Do you have a motion to that effect?
I'll second that. All right. And I would also like a motion to approve selectments meetings.
Madam Chair, let's vote that first.
You want to?
You want to vote that? You have a motion and a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm moving too quickly, I'm sorry.
All right.
Okay, a motion to approve those warrants?
Yeah, you have a motion, you have the second.
Second, any discussion? Okay.
Those in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
There we go.
Okay, approve a selectments meeting from 2118 to 3618. I'd like a motion.
You have a motion to that effect?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I would also like to acknowledge minutes and reports from other departments, a month of reports from the fire department. I'd like a motion for that.
You have a motion for that.
Second. We have some anniversaries here. In the fire department, we have an anniversary of Chief Martel for 32 years of service, Matthew Graves for 26 years, and David Martel for 24 years of service. And I would like to congratulate all three of them. They served the town well and they're very devoted to the community and I'd like to thank them for their service all these years.
Excellent.
Now, we have some announcements. Tyler Wolin, who is the district aide to Senator Ann Golding, will be holding office hours at the Brookfield Town Hall from 2:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. tomorrow. All are welcome. A regional WRTA public hearing will be held on April 12th, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. at the Brookfield Congregational Church, 8 Common Street. This relates to possible changes to the WRTA rule system. Area residents who ride the bus or those who wish to support this vital transportation length are encouraged to attend. And now we have a public access. If anyone would like to speak during the public access session of our meeting.
Someone else wants to speak, I will. Last meeting, you said I questioned about the use of salt in the town of Brookfield. And I asked you to put that on the agenda and I don't see it on the agenda.
We were going to bring that up under other.
What do you mean, on other?
Our other, um, the agenda under other, we were going to bring that up.
You couldn't just list that on the agenda? I mean, you had to put it under other? Not that it matters, but...
Well, by the time he came in, when did he call Karen? Was it yesterday?
Well, we already had the agenda.
Yeah, the agenda was set up.
I was thinking there were two items you were going to, you were going to neglect.
Yeah, there was two different items.
Well, let's take it out of order right now.
Okay, we'll take it out of order right now.
Okay, what do you got? What do you got? Why are we using pure salt on all the roads now?
All right. We have that here. Karen, did you put it?
It's under other, yeah.
It's under other. I don't know, maybe if Mr. Snyder could explain that better than I could.
That we do not primarily use salt. We use a mix of sand and salt. And so, what came from the last meeting was you were going to get a report. This is the report that you asked for. And what that explains is that we haven't...
Did you read it?
I've seen it.
Oh, okay.
We generally have a 50-50 mix of sand and salt. There are times, based on conditions and the like, where a straight salt mix, a straight salt would be in order. And it's really up to the highway superintendent and his knowledge of the roads, what action he would take. But the accusation that the town uses primarily salt is incorrect.
Well, I beg to differ on that. So I've been watching the storms and I've seen what's in the trucks and it's pure salt. And if you look down in the salt shed, it's pure salt down there. There are three massive, last week, there are three huge, long, super-long dump trucks, pure salt. And all three of them. You can also, if certain intersections, you can see just pure salt, just spewing out of the dump trucks as they take the corners. Central Street, up on Lamb Street, High Street, Lake Road, it's pure salt. I mean, you can't deny it, Clarence. It's pure salt.
I think actually math is...
I didn't say, did I say that we don't use pure salt?
It's salt. It's not a mixture.
What I said is that we use a, primarily, we use a mixture. You have a report to that effect in front of you. What we do do is from time to time...
Right. This means nothing, this report means nothing.
Okay, fine. You have a report that we said that we would give you. Further, we're telling you that there are times that we do, in fact, use straight salt based on the certain conditions that we have.
Okay.
And guess what? We're going to keep doing it.
Okay.
Because we have a highway superintendent who's responsible to the town, for the safety of the town, and if he deems it necessary, we're doing it because it's the safety of the town.
Okay, and that's all good.
Further, I'll take it a little bit further as far as what's going on during these recent storms that we've had. And we've seen on the news of the towns with trees all over the place and the like. What I would say is I would also suggest that the highway superintendent has taken his initiative to take down the numbers of trees that he's taken down, so that we, in fact, have been minimally impacted by numbers of trees that have come down through these various storms. So that, I would suggest that we take the superintendent and his tenacity to do the job to the best of his ability and move on.
Trees, we're not discussing trees. We've been taking trees down over the years. We've been doing that for years and we have a good program on doing that. That has nothing to do with the use of pure salt. And I ask the question is, why are we taking that policy now to use pretty much pure salt now on most storms?
Madam Chair, I'd suggest that we move on.
I asked, well, I asked, no, there you go again, brushing it off again, Clarence.
No, we're not brushing it off.
Every time I come up here, I ask something and you brush everything off.
He's not brushing...
There's no accountability here for any questions or answers that I have.
Nobody is brushing anything off.
Madam Chair, I answered the question that he had to the best of my ability. I'm suggesting that we do not do what he's suggesting. We are in disagreement. I'll see Mr. Holcraft at the town meeting and we'll have the town decide whether or not to salt sand.
I'm just asking a question.
Madam Chair, may I speak? If you actually read that, one of the things that, if you sit down and do the math and actually read the information that we provided to you...
Mm-hmm, I've done it before.
Per road mile, well, that's great, apparently it didn't stick. Per road mile, the straight salt, based on properly calibrating the equipment, actually runs, let's see what the math comes out exactly, because it's too tiny on my cellphone screen, winds up saving us about $900 per...
Well, that's what the paperwork says.
That's what the paperwork says.
But I'm talking about the use of what the salt is doing to our wells, to the land.
We don't have to go into the rest of the reasoning with him because...
I understand that. What I'm just saying is that...
Snyder already did.
The question he answered.
He answered it.
All right, so basically, I'm not going to get an answer of usage of why we're using pure salt?
We gave you the answer.
We gave you the answer.
You can't buy it next. It doesn't come next, you have to fix it there.
That's correct, Ken.
The selling is pure salt, which is more of a, the sand isn't working in the cold weather, the salt does, because once it hits the road, it starts to melt. The sand doesn't, it just sticks.
And just to clarify what I could say.
Ken, it's been working for 18,000 years. Where are you coming from?
The state uses pure salt also. If you go out and see, everybody's using the pure salt nowadays.
But I don't care what everyone else, I'm just, I'm asking, you know, what the policy is in the usage, because salt is more expensive. It's not good for the wells, it's not good for the swamps, it's not good for our wetlands, it's not good for cars.
We're just trying to explain to you, Dave, it's right on that report that it's saving money.
You don't get as much, you don't get as much, well, that's what that says, I disagree with it, but you don't get as much traction?
We're going to move on.
All right, so you didn't answer, okay, so try to get an answer for me to my question.
And then another thing I want to give you also, you had asked about the repairs at Tantascwa.
Yeah.
And this was either, I have a copy for everybody on the board, this was either in the, the new leader or the Quay Bob Pond, and I copied it and I got it out to you so you can see the repairs, what's going on at Tantascwa.
What was the date on this, Linda?
It was, I, remember when you came to us two weeks ago?
Yeah, I know, but I mean, when did this article come out?
That article came out that same week that we had a meeting.
It didn't get in the paper, but it was left.
It was the same week that we had a meeting.
Okay, so two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
Okay.
So I saw the article and I put it together, but I cut it out and I copied it for you so you'd have it.
All right, good, all right, thank you for getting this. All right, well, try to get me an answer on the use of why we're using pure salt.
I got your answer.
Well, I don't accept it and I don't, I think it's a poor answer.
Did you have anything else you wanted to bring up to say?
No, I think I'm good for the moment, Linda. All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, now, our next, next one on the agenda, we're going to award the town report printing. Usually, we have about, Karen sends them out to 10 different people, and only two respond at this time.
Usually, we have much more, at least six respond.
So she only get two for...
This time I was shocked, I thought they were all going to print at the last minute and we only got two.
So we're, it was from county press for $1,216.07, and Alpha Graphics for $1,636.98. We print usually 400 books, so I would like a motion to award the contract to the country press at $1,216.07.
You have that motion?
Second.
I just, we've used, well, I've used, I'm separate from the town business, you do a nice, nice job.
That's what they have been doing it the last few years and they're always, they're always the cheapest anyway, but...
They do a good job.
And they do a good job, yeah.
They do a great job, as you can see.
So in this case, a little bitter wins.
A little bitter. Okay, now, next on the agenda, I would like to set the date for our annual town meeting. And I had talked to the town accountant today, she was in, and she thinks a good, she's going to be gone, what is it, the first week of June or someplace, but she thinks that a good date to set it would be June 50th of this year. And that would be for this, for this annual at 7:00, and the special would be at 6:30. If that's agreeable with the two of you.
Sounds good to me.
15th, is that a Friday?
That's a Friday evening.
Okay.
And, okay, and then I'd like a motion for that.
Do you have a motion to that effect?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Have we checked with the moderator, both moderator and the school, to see if both the facility will be open?
Before we set it, we always do. Okay, and then I would like to open the warrant for the annual town meeting tonight, and I would like it to close at April 2nd at 3:00 p.m. So it gives them, you know, a little more than a month to do it.
April 2nd? Well, April 2nd isn't a little more than a month.
April 2nd is another quarter.
You mean April 20th?
Oh, April 20th, I got my dates wrong, okay, I'm sorry.
Nope, that's fine.
I got my dates wrong. Let me look on my calendar again, because I was looking at another one. Okay, April 2nd. Okay, why don't we close at, it'll give them a, probably on the 30th, that's what it was, I have my dates wrong.
April 30th?
Yeah, we'll close at April 30th. And I had talked to, Steve Phyllis couldn't make the meeting this evening, but I've been in contact with Steve, and he said, you know, that sounds fine to him, but he would probably like to come in our next meeting in two weeks, maybe have a joint meeting and explain a lot of this, a lot of this to the membership, because this is such, he has so many new people, they don't really understand the opening and closing of the warrants, so I agree to that. So we're going to do that with Steve.
What time do you, are you closing at, on April 30th?
We're going to close it on 30th, at 3:00 p.m. Okay.
So, oh, then let's, if we're going to do that, when's our meeting?
And then we will meet on May...
Come back just before the April 30th, what's our last meeting?
April 17th, I think.
Yeah, the 17th.
Okay.
So we're going to close it on the 30th. Okay. And now, all right, and then now the special. Instead of opening it tonight, I thought maybe we could open the special on April 30th. And that's where I got my dates mixed up. And then the town accountant suggested that we close it May 31st, because she says, oh, by then, a lot of the departments will know, you know, just what they need for monies, because she said there are quite a few deficits in a lot of the departments. So if that's agreeable with both of you, that's what we'll do.
Yep.
It'll give everybody plenty of time.
So it'll open when and...
4:30 and close 5:30.
Yeah.
Say that again?
We'll open the special warrant on April 30th, and then it'll close on May 31st at 3:00 p.m.
Okay. I want to make sure I understand this, so you're opening the annual town meeting now?
Yes.
Opening it now, and you're closing it at 4:30 at 3:00 p.m. You're opening the special town meeting warrant on 4:30, you're closing it at 5:30 at 3:00 p.m.
Yes. Okay. And then also, we can set it when we get closer, we usually meet at 6:00 before the annual with the advisory board, but we can set that beforehand. So those dates are all agreeable with both of you? Okay, and we'll, you can check with the school, and we'll check with Mr. Fag, and I'm sure those dates are pretty well with him also. So then we'll try to get, we'll try to get together on our next meeting with the advisory board, and we'll have a joint meeting so we can explain all this out.
With regards to communication to the department heads, there were a number of items at the last town meeting that we had put off intending to do a fall special, we did not do a fall special. Do we want to communicate to the department heads that items that were not included will automatically roll? Do they need to resubmit their documentation? Because I know that the capital improvement planning committee had at least recommended inclusion of most of the items that had been passed over at the annual town meeting. Do we want to just go ahead and roll those items directly to the warrant?
No, they have to be resubmitted.
That's probably a good idea, just to make sure.
I would, I would, one of the things that, in the, in the context, this question comes in the context of a conversation where a department had said, hey, we want to, you know, we want to make sure that we're meeting our obligations, but we can't unless it's communicated to us what the expectations are.
Well, I'll send an email and I'll remind them that they have to resubmit their articles.
Well, what I was going to say is that if we could at least, I know that we won't necessarily have minutes out from this meeting, but if we could include this entire timeline in that communication, where it basically says, hey, town meeting is going to be...
Karen, she always does that.
Yeah, when they set the town meeting, the annual town meeting, the special town meeting, and when they also set the deadlines, I always send it along, along with, I attach the average sheets for them.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so I do that anyway.
Great. Yeah, because it's just, because I don't think we ever proactively communicated to them that we weren't doing a fall special, we talked about it at the meeting, but I don't think we actually got a communication out.
Well, because I kept thinking you might have to just...
Right, so it's just to ensure that they're...
And then I talked to the town accountant today, and she said, you know, the big thing right now is they're getting, working on the schedule aid to get that, and she says, she's sure by the time town meeting comes around, we'll have our free cash.
Good deal. I mean, they got a lot...
She's done a lot, I mean, there's been a lot of catch-up there, and this isn't that it's all been the last two or three years, it's a car, say, from 10 years on or even longer.
Right. I'm a little, yeah, I mean, that's one of the things that seems to be clear, is that this is, this is more than just the last couple of years.
No, it's not just, this goes back, I didn't say it goes back 20 years or longer. And there's been a lot of things that haven't been done, and this is what they're trying to do, they're trying to get everything reconciled right up to date.
One question I do have is, have you had any communication with the treasurer's office about kicking off a reconciliation process between themselves and the accountant for current year? Because I know that Keith had spoke to it when we did the treasurer's review.
No, I haven't had any communication.
Would you prefer to reach out to him, or can I follow up with him about what the status is on what he had said they were going to establish between the treasurer and the accountant's office?
I think, Linda, she, back to, back to communication.
Okay, okay, sir.
If you don't, because I've got a second piece to that, Linda.
Okay, so you would like to know?
If we've developed, if we've started and developed the process for reconciling between the treasurer's office and the accountant's office for the current year.
And that may have been ongoing, which is very, I'm just a little concerned about that.
Yeah.
But I think the other piece to this, Linda, is Carrie's support.
Oh, I know.
And when I bumped into her on call today, I just said to her, if she needed additional resources, that she just needs to tell you.
I've told her to, I mean, Carrie's been doing excellent job, I mean...
Yeah, but she's just one person.
Yeah, she's one person, I mean, she's, she's found all of these, you know, mistakes over the years, and she brought them forward, and she, she knew where to go to get her, get the help to get these problems corrected. Because all the other years, I mean, they've just been like, you don't like to say, they're just like put under the rug, and nobody has done anything about it.
It's been small things.
And it's been a lot of turnovers and different people who have hold these positions over the years. And finally, right now, I feel we have a good team, and they're correcting all these problems. And we're going to come out on top, everything's going to be reconciled, and I think we'll just move on forward.
Absolutely. And my question is more just to make certain that we're positioned to do that, so that we don't wind up accumulating more of a backlog of this work and wind up back where we started.
I don't think so, but right now, I mean, I don't know where they are currently, if they are, you know, reconciling right now.
Well, they should at least be...
Because she said that she, right now, I talked to Carrie, she says she's got a lot on her plate going on right now.
That's true, but they could reconcile, they still do have, it may actually make a lot of what she's doing easier, and I suspect she would be open to kicking that process off if it hasn't been kicked off already.
Well, I'll talk to the both of them about that.
That would be great.
I'll talk to the two of them about that.
That'd be awesome.
And I know Lonnie had, Veda was here all day.
I saw her.
And she had a training session with Veda today, too.
Great.
It's been good.
Keep working the problem the best we can.
I know that's all we can do, is just keep working on it.
Speaking of the finance and communications, I know that you've had a lot on your plate. Is, is there anything that we could do to support you in kicking back off with the financial procedures manual and getting the rest of it?
Well, that's what I was waiting to get this done, and then I was going to jump back. Because where that stands is, everything up to the treasurer's office has been completed, it's done, it's been distributed, we're operating to those, those conditions, and now what we have to do is trip over into the treasurer's office to continue that. I've given it to Lonnie, but I've said, the other things are more important than that.
Okay.
Okay. Do we want to bring up anything else under this portion?
No, I think, no, I think so.
So do we do our motion to have all of these, I'd like a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, motion to the effect of the dates for special...
But the submitting town and the opening of the warrant.
And the warrants, yes. And Karen, you have all the dates.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, our next one is to approve for the town hall improvement committee. We had a request from Bill Simpson.
Yep.
He would like the town to authorize the committee to spend up to $400 for a dehumidifier and a new hard door, new door for hardware for the server room in the basement. And he said the funds will be drawn from the town hall improvement account, and he'll, he'll install it.
And the front, and much of those funds were from the, from the town hall, so it has not, it's not taking funds from any other...
Because I was, I didn't know if it was taking funds out of that $50,000 that we had already appropriated, but it's not. So I would like a motion to approve that.
You have that motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
I, just a point, that we're going to have a variety show here soon, where proceeds of that come towards the town hall, so we want to encourage everybody to come to the variety.
Is it going to be downstairs?
No, it's over in the school, because we can't do things here.
Oh, yeah, we can't.
Okay, yes. So, we're over at the school on May the 4th, if my memory's right, and for the variety show, so I would encourage the folks to show up.
Good, okay, thank you. All right, so we'll have, so we can approve that.
Yep.
All right. Okay, now, I would like to move on to this, but we have two more special permits. One, the event...
We have one.
Oh, one, okay, the event is on 9/22/2018, Quay Bob Pond, and that's for the Coventry Bass Anglers. And I would like to have a motion to approve that.
You have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's good.
Mr. Snyder?
We're over 1,000, I stuck in.
That's it, Linda.
Maybe a different...
I have just one quick add-on, if that's okay. I know this came in prior to our last meeting, but can we contact O'Reilly, Talbot, and Oakton and just ask them if they would CC the town on the results of their mitigation efforts? Because it says, it says in the communication that they have, that they're going to be doing some cleanup related to removing the oil tank, and it would be good to just get the follow-up, just get the report post that removal. You know, I don't think we need any additional engagement, but I think it would be good for us to have on file any results following that.
Can you give me that?
Yep, absolutely.
All right. Then, I know we had to cancel yesterday's meeting with town council, so I'm not able to make it on Monday, and they said probably sometime in April would be good, so I don't know if we want to try to pick some April dates that would be good. Like, see, they're running, they're running in April, they're running into town meetings starting already.
No, that's why we got to get this thing going.
Do we want to maybe, hmm.
So what about...
Do we want to try something maybe for the beginning of the week on, the first week of April, and see if something is good for them?
I would see if they've got a date, then...
I'll email them, see if they can do anything in the first week of April, you guys are all open to that.
Yeah, because we have a meeting at 6:30, and depending on how much is on that meeting, we could even maybe go through that agenda if there's not a lot of...
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, that's when Steve wants to come in and do the joint meeting with the advisory board, so we could explain.
On April third, that, that's what he told you, Steve Gell?
Yes, the next one.
Correct, he didn't tell you that, okay.
So we wanna avoid the third, then?
Yeah, we wanna avoid the third.
So we're gonna, you're gonna make that a joint meeting, no one told you that much else?
Yeah, talk to Steve, because he said, he just wanted, he says there's so many new members that they have on the board, and he said he would just like us to explain the opening, closing of the warrants, and going over the articles and things like that.
I just wanna tell you, the next meeting we have is four seventeen, and that's when I'm taking my week's vacation, because my dog is having her baby on sixteen, so...
Well, what we could do is actually check with some of the other boards that have clerks and see if their clerks want to pick up...
Didn't you say that Lois might come in?
Lois said she was committed, and she said she'd be, yeah, right, but I just didn't want it to be a huge, like, like when you review the, um, the articles or anything, I didn't wanna put too much work on it.
Oh, okay.
If it's not a heavy agenda, then yes, I'd...
So it's three and seventeen for next month?
Uh, it's, uh, four-three and four-seventeen, and you can always change the date to the next week, we'll be doing the next week.
Do we wanna do the next week, we could do it on the twenty-fourth?
You wanna do that instead?
Sure, but then, let's, the, the lawyer meeting, we'd have to get going, because we're gonna get these buildings torn down.
Lois, maybe...
We'll have Lois, we'll have Lois do it, and, and if, if, I think it gets, if the agenda's getting too heavy, then we'll postpone it for the next week.
No, we can skip though, Karen, we can skip the six-seventeenth, and we can do the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-four.
But I mean, say if they wanna meet with us, and we wanna get it going right after them, but say if it's during the week, you're gonna be, Lois...
I'd recommend maybe that we wanna leave the seventeen in place, and just if there's anything critical, we can always cancel it, like, right, right prior to it. You know, that way, if anything comes up, that way it's not three weeks between us meeting.
We'll leave the seventeen.
Just for, like, if there's something that's important.
Do you want me to set the twenty-four, but do you want...
Yeah, doesn't hurt.
Yeah, set the twenty-fourth.
Yep. But then, let's see what Kate can do.
We'll see, yeah, see, see when they can come up, one, we'll see if they can come up sometime on the first, I mean, I know they wanted to do an afternoon meeting, see if...
Tuesdays and Wednesdays are usually in town.
So, so Karen, Beth is in town on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, so maybe they could see if it's a Tuesday, Wednesday earlier in the month.
Yeah, and if, if they can't, then the Thursdays, usually I can swap for, uh, for one of my other days that's in town.
Hopefully four-two or four-three, and, and if they wanna come in the evening, that's okay with you guys?
Yeah.
Try to get them to come during the meeting.
But I think it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be a long meeting.
I don't, I wouldn't want them here for an evening meeting, because it's too bad they couldn't come out for, I know that they, the other one was gonna be at two in the afternoon, too bad they couldn't maybe come out, say even ten or eleven in the morning, and we could try to get it done.
Yes.
All right, let me, let me see what I can say.
And actually, actually, Thursday mornings are usually pretty good for me, I can, I can swap that in pretty easily if we wanted to do a day meeting.
Yeah, so get right in touch with them in the morning, okay? Thank you. Okay, so that's one. All right, and now we have some correspondence here. We had this, let's see, the first one came from, um, from Trudy O'Connell, who is the chairman of Brookfield Invincible, and they had, I guess, Chief Blanchard was down there, and he's, uh, he's been to Sunday with them and explaining to them all about, you know, the different, uh, things about, they asked him views on gun safety, school safety, and ways in which gun laws in our state could be made more effective, and I guess he gave a very good presentation, and she would just like to commend him for what he did.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, and then our next one here is from the, um, Memorial Day Parade Committee, and they are, are asking us to, uh, to march and speak during the celebrations, and that's what that is, and we always do that, and we're very, we're very welcome that we will do that for them, so that's it all, I guess that's it. How about, anybody wanna bring up anything under other tonight?
Um, can we do a really brief executive session on some final, uh, and not tying on the, on the bargaining unit contract?
Sure, we can do that, we'll go in under, under number two on that, and number two is, okay, well, okay, we'll take a moment now, if we want to go into...
Motion.
Motion to go into executive session at seven oh-five, and then we will vote to reconvene, uh, our, our regular meeting, and to adjourn that. And we're going to go in under number two, and I will read it, we're just in front, and number two is to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiation with non-union personnel. Lincoln and I?
We're dealing with union personnel.
It says none.
Yeah, I said number two, but you know what, it's number...
Is it three?
It's number, it's number...
Okay, let me read that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have a free list.
To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if any open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation positions of the public body, and the chair solely declares. Lincoln and I?
Sarah.
Coughlin, aye.